All right, welcome to today's candidate forum and thank you for joining us. Today's forum is brought to you in partnership with City Club of Central Oregon and the League of Women Voters of Deschutes County, two organizations that are passionately nonpartisan and whose purpose today is to engage and inform Oregon voters for the general election. Today, we are hosting the candidates for the Redmond City Council. My name is Harrison Womack, proud City Club Board Member, and I'm honored to serve as our moderator today. First, I'd like to give a quick shout out to City Club's annual sponsors. Without their support, we would not be able to bring you today's program. Today's live stream is also made possible by Connect Central Oregon, a nonprofit launched with the assistance of the OSU Cascade's Innovation Collab. Our sponsors for the entire series of candidate forums are the Deschutes Public Library and Buchanan Schmidt LLC. We are grateful for their support for these educational forums. If you're interested in supporting City Club or the League of Women Voters, please check out our websites to get more information. Our candidate forums are conducted according to the League of Women Voters Guidelines. All candidates filed in their race are invited to participate in our forums, and we hope to present voters with all participants. In the interest of fairness, we do not let an RSVP of regrets cancel a forum. Thank you to the Redmond City Council candidates for participating in today's forum. We appreciate the gravity of committing to run for office, and our goal is to provide an opportunity for fair and civil discourse. We will start with opening statements. Each candidate will have two minutes for their opening remarks, and they will have two minutes to answer each question. At the end, each candidate may give a two-minute closing statement. For our opening statements, we have randomly selected the order, and our closing statements will be in the reverse of that order. Now, let's get started. We will start with Ronald Osmanson for the opening remarks. Ronald, why don't you go ahead?
My name is Ron Osmanson, and I'm running for City Council because I want to serve our city I love and help create a brighter future for next generations. As a father raising a young family, I fear the potential for families like mine to be priced out of Redmond as we grow. I want to keep Redmond affordable and full of opportunities for residents of all incomes and all walks of life. I want to be a City Councilor that is accessible to everyone and listens to all the information and perspectives before casting a vote. For homelessness, economic recovery, transportation infrastructure, and affordable housing, I want to tackle these issues that matter to our residents. My background would bring new experience and expertise to the City Council, Redmond and Central Oregon in general, lack of affordable and high-quality childcare. As the owner and operator of the daycare with the background in childcare and early education, I would be a leader on this issue to help meet the needs of families raising children here in Redmond. Redmond needs a leader who can be able to represent their community, have focused-driven goals, and who is passionate about the work they put into it. We need elected leaders who will listen and work for our community. I feel that I am the best candidate for City Council because I will work diligently for our community to rebuild the full confidence in our community without doubts from our citizens. My focus as a City Councilor will be transportation, UGB growth, growth of our businesses, veterans, affordable living for working families, and public safety. I'm asking for your confidence in me as a City Councilor and vote for Ron Osmanson, and God bless America.
Thank you. Our next candidate will be Michael Kuzinska. Michael, go ahead. We don't have Michael.
This is Scott in the control room. It appears he accidentally disconnected, so when he rejoins, I'll let you know.
All right, we'll move on to Shannon Wedding. Shannon, you're up.
All right, thank you all. Hi, my name is Shannon Wedding, and I'm very excited to be a candidate for City Council in the city of Redmond. Am I a politician? Absolutely not, but I am a licensed civil engineer with 15 years of experience in my industry on all sides of my industry. My career has had a heavy focus on critical infrastructure and planning, including master planning surrounded by growth and development. I'm most proud of the seven years I spent as a public servant for a large utility, and I enjoy being a representative for the city or for the citizens with a primary focus on protecting public health and safety. That's really what drives me, is making sure to be a voice for the public. I spent a lot of time in the trenches, learning and getting hands on learning, because I believe there is nothing I would ask someone else to do that I wouldn't do myself. I developed a proactive approach to infrastructure projects to build confidence in the community because effective communication and any impacts to the public, they deserve to know how these projects and how these emergencies will affect them prior to the commencement of that work. I believe in being completely honest and transparent, but I also feel that being approachable as a leader is incredibly important because every citizen has a voice and deserves to be heard, and as a leader, you are their voice. You are the one that can communicate their thoughts and their values. I strongly support first responders and believe that public works employees are a sense of first responders because they're the populace that keeps our critical infrastructure going in the time of emergency response. I believe strongly in supporting local business because it's important, because they're the core of our community and who we are and why we grew to love Redmond. I believe in diversity and equality, but with a purpose, with a defined purpose, and I believe education is a huge part of that. If elected, I promise to bring fresh perspectives, fresh ideas, and represent the city of Redmond the way I feel it deserves to be represented.
Thank you. Ed Finch is our next candidate. Ed, go ahead. Ed, you're muted. Seem to be having technical difficulties. Let's move on to the next candidate. Don, are you ready to go?
Yes, I am.
All right, Don, you're up.
Hello, and thanks for having us all as part of your continuing efforts for voter advocacy. It's a privilege to be part of a league and City Club event. So my name's Don Crouch, and I'm proud to be running for City Council in Redmond. I'm a reconciliation specialist for Pacific Source Health Plans. I'm a father of four, grandfather of nine, and moved to Redmond almost 15 years ago. For the last seven years, I served on the Redmond Downtown Urban Advisory Committee, commonly known as DURAC, where I had the privilege of helping to bring a variety of quality projects to Redmond. I'm running for City Council because I want to continue serving the city I love. My time on DURAC has provided me an excellent view into the workings of the council. The facilitation skills I used to bring projects like the SCP New Redmond Hotel, the Center, and Cross Creek in for a landing amidst diverse opinions and interests will be a great fit for the council. Redmond, like so many other American cities, is graced with an increasing diversity along with rapid growth. Part of the engine that drives a growing city is an effective competent government committed to economic development for all its citizens. Leveraging public-private partnerships is a highly effective way to bring a variety of housing and commercial and industrial projects to Redmond, and I will continue to advocate for the development of those programs. Economic development is a primary function of City Council, but there are certainly other issues to discuss, and I look forward to your questions.
Excellent, thank you. Clifford Evelyn, you are up, sir. Clifford, go for it. You're muted, Clifford.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Clifford Evelyn, and I thank you for having me today. I'm running for City Council because I'm motivated by a call to service. I've always loved helping people, and being a City Councilor will give me an opportunity to continue doing so. I have served as a US Naval Officer and a Commander for the Sheriff's Department, and this has prepared me for this position as well. In addition, my life experience of living in a major urban area and working with diverse groups of people gives me a perspective that many have not experienced. I want to look at various pressing issues such as homelessness, mental health, addiction, and affordable housing because they cannot be ignored. Reviving small businesses is also on my list. I am the next best candidate because of my interest in the future of Redmond. I will also use my experience to move forward with the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. The purpose of this committee would be to develop and promote strategies and best practices within the realm of racial, social, sexual, and gender diversity. With the changing demographics of Central Oregon, this committee would be an important part of that change and an asset to our community. Thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you. I see that Michael tried to join again. Michael, you're up. It doesn't appear to be working. So we will move on. We'll try Ed again. Ed, you're up. We still can't hear Ed. Unfortunately, technical difficulties. Try one more time. It does not appear to be working. Sorry, Ed. Okay, so we will move on to our first question, and we will continue with the same order of candidates that we have. So Ron, you're gonna go first, and here's our question. What guidelines would you recommend to balance the community health impact of COVID-19 versus the economic impacts on small businesses? Ron, you're up.
Well, it's important to have our businesses but also protect them from the COVID-19. So what we're doing right now with the PPE distribution with the CVB is important to distribute the PPE out to our businesses to keep them up and going. A lot of people don't agree with the guidelines that the governor has put out, but you know, it's for the safety of our public, but we need also be mindful about this pandemic that's going on. It's also important to spend locally and, you know, keep our businesses alive here in Central Oregon by supporting them and spending in town. So with that, I mean, we need to continue what we're doing as far as the city is concerned and spend locally and protect our businesses with the PPE distributions.
Excellent, thank you. Michael, why don't you take a shot at that answer? Let's see if your mic is working.
Got back in. They're doing construction at the end of the street, and they keep cutting my power.
Oh, no. We can hear you.
So I don't know what the question was.
Excellent, yeah. So the question is, what guidelines would you recommend to balance the community health impact of COVID-19 versus the economic impacts on small businesses?
Well, under the current circumstances, the city of Redmond does have a rainy day fund that they're using to circumvent the losses of the tax base that they'd be due to COVID-19. Fortunately, they have planned ahead, and the economic impact to the city of Redmond will be able to be covered as long as, you know, if this doesn't go on too much longer. As far as helping the local businesses, I think the president's plan to give them PPV money is definitely the way to go and also the way to increase the unemployment benefits paid to those people. Other than that, I don't see how the city can really help each individual within the city without having the economic base open 100% rather than being under current restrictions due to the COVID-19 crisis. Thank you.
Thank you for that answer. Shannon, you're up.
All right, thank you. So I echo in the sentiments. Our hands publicly as a government are tied because of the mandates coming down from the state, but as citizens in the local community, it's up to us to stand up and support those local businesses. As I stated in my interest statement, I believe local business is the reason we love Redmond. As a representative for the city, I think we need to look at those available resources, whether they're on a federal or state level, and ensure that we're providing the assistance we can, whether it be through the payroll, whether it be through providing PPE, and really take a deep dive into the budget and see if there's anywhere we can allocate resources, whether it be the rainy day fund that Mike mentioned, or how can we collectively come together and support those that support us? I believe, as I mentioned, it's our opportunity as candidates and as future counselors to really provide that voice for the local businesses and get out and talk to the local businesses and support those local businesses because those are our friends and family that have been impacted by COVID. Those are the people that we've seen take the hit and see the downturn and struggle. So how can we, as a local community, look at what we have available to support them during these mandates and this pandemic that COVID-19 has caused? Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like Ed disconnected and came back. So Ed, we'll go to you. See if that mic's working.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you. It's just a little low, so speak up.
So on the COVID issue, the question is, is what can we do as a community, given the governor's guidelines for health safety and then balancing that with economic development? I would say that the impact of the COVID and the health regulations from the governor has been somewhat uneven in the community. Working with a lot of small businesses, there are many that are doing very well throughout the epidemic, but it's fallen really hard on restaurants, on those type of service industries, salons, beauty salons, et cetera. So the economic impact to our local businesses has been quite disparate. Quite frankly, I think there could be some loosening of other restrictions on particularly salons and barber shops and things of that nature with proper distancing and mask wearing. But I would have to say that the city doesn't have a huge role in terms of how those regulations affect private business. I think the city can help guide people if necessary through those guidelines and reach an appropriate balance, but from my perspective, those businesses that are in the service industry, they are hit hard, and really they need all the patronage we can give them under the current guidelines.
Thank you for that answer. All right, Don, you are up.
Thanks for the question. I would start by saying that treating community health and economic health separately is somewhat perilous. We cannot have economic health without a healthy community. I support the distancing and masking guidelines set forward by the state. I also think that as City Council, there could be some opportunities for us to advance the case of some of our small business owners that have been having some difficulty getting promised funding by communicating with our legislators, et cetera, and kind of performing an ombudsman effect for them. But I agree with most of the other folks that have spoken that the direct role of the city, other than enforcing the existing laws and restrictions, is somewhat limited. But I've also been mightily impressed by the way Redmond came together when the pandemic started in order to help each other. People driving around, delivering masks, stuff like that is heartwarming, and it's what makes a city hum and be able to move forward in difficult times.
Thank you for your answer. Clifford, you're up. And you are muted, sir.
I'm sorry. Thank you. I think that we should follow the precautions in place for COVID-19 because that'll get us on the right path to getting things back to normal. In regard to the business owners downtown and in the city here, I went door to door in the last two months, talking to business owners, asking them what they needed, you know, how can we help? What did they expect from City Council? And a lot of them just said things like, what we need is, we need some relief. You know, the rents are too high. They said, we can't pay the bills, you know. There was one in suggesting put a freeze on their taxes temporarily until we get through this process, you know, but they're really concerned about it, and they're really concerned because they see stores around them closing down and losing their business and walking away, and that concerns them. So I think as a City Council, if I was in charge of City Council, I would be calling an emergency session about right now and having discussions on how can we address that issue and how could we help our small business owners? Because they are the pulse of the city, and we need to keep them thriving and doing well. So that would be my suggestion.
Thank you. Our next round of questions is just a simple yes or no question, and we'd like you to just answer with a yes or no. So here's the question. Do you support dispensaries and cannabis sales within the city limits of Redmond? Ron, you are up.
Answer's no.
Okay, Michael.
No.
Shannon.
No.
Ed. Ed, you're up. And we'll skip Ed. Don, you're up.
Yes.
Clifford, you're up.
Definitely, yes.
Okay, thank you for your answers. So our next question is regarding housing. So we have a number of people around and in Redmond who cannot afford rent to rent or to buy housing here. What would you do to help tackle affordable housing in Redmond? And we will start with Ron once again.
Thank you. So I just recently faced this issue not too long ago. Our landlord sold off our property to another person, and I was in the rental market to find housing. Well, come to find out that a lot of property managements around here do not accept our daycare as a business or to bring it to our household. So being that said, we had to find a way to expand our business and find a place at the same time. Rent here is extremely, extremely high. What we need to do is focus on the urban growth boundary and expand that so the cost of living in Redmond comes down and that we could be able to afford it. We also need to bring in some businesses that will accommodate for affordable, to accommodate employment here so we could afford an affordable wage to live. So going forward, we need to focus on expanding our growth boundaries and also see if we could also increase the numbers for the affordable housings that are going on, especially with the Skyline Village going up. That was approved by Jack Zika with House Bill 2336. I'm talking with him to see if we can expand out a little bit more and also with our mayor to see if we could also get that on the next long session in the legislature. But we need to focus on bringing people and families to stay in Redmond and grow the families here.
Thank you for your answer. Michael, you're up.
Member of the current planning commission in the city of Redmond, we have worked on this issue for the last 13 months. It started with our housing needs analysis, continued with our economic needs analysis, and after the completion of those two documents, we have made several changes to our development code to help reduce the cost of housing within the city limits of Redmond. We have increased density. We've had expanded the housing types that we are now allow in the city of Redmond. We've removed a lot of the conditional requirements for building permits within the city of Redmond for several businesses. We've opened up the city to businesses via cooperation with Ready and EDCO, and I think that the city is poised to make a big comeback once the COVID-19 issue is over, and with the changes we've made to the development code within the city, will make it cheaper for builders to come in and produce affordable housing. Where we used to have single-family lots through most of the city, now we're incorporating townhomes, duplexes, triplexes, cottage homes, and even mini homes. And I think that that's the right direction to go for the city, and as a City Councilor, I'll make sure that those recommendations are implemented by the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you for your answer. Shannon, you are up.
I agree with Mike. I think that the efforts the city have made or has made thus far and can look to make about incorporating the different types of housing are critical to the city. Again, it's taking care of those that live here currently. How do we evaluate development? How do we evaluate large corporations or large businesses coming in that can increase the wages available, that can provide jobs to promote and allow the current citizens to be able to afford to live in the city? We want to have positive impacts to those that live here, so it's really leveraging the availability of that housing, but also making sure that we're not causing detrimental impact by some of the developments going in to citizens and consumers that already live here. And really with these developments, making sure that we're keeping the community in mind in promoting green space, promoting community areas, things like that. There are so many different ways locally we can look at promoting affordable housing. It's just how creative we are about it and promoting the different types of developments that keep Redmond the city we love.
Thank you. Ed, you are up. And you're muted, Ed, just real quick.
Is it okay now?
Yep, we can hear you.
All right, so the best way to do it is to have public lands and do a public-private partnership whereby housing and rental opportunities are guaranteed through that public-private partnership. One thing I think we have to make sure that we don't sacrifice is that when we create new neighborhoods for affordable housing, that we make sure that they remain livable for the long term. That is, that we just don't do the cheapest housing that we can do that will fall apart in a number of years. That's happened before. We cannot let that happen again. We have to have quality in part of the transaction when we do a public-private partnership to assure that public affordable housing, affordable rents, and to assure that there's going to be quality development along with it.
Thank you. Okay, Don, you are up.
As a member and Chair of DURAC, we brought in a couple of critical affordable housing projects. The first one was Cross Creek over by Fred Meyer, and the next one is Midtown Place that's going in next to Grocery Outlet. And one of the things that DURAC did was made sure that who we brought in to complete the project would be an active partner in the property management going forward to address the situation that Ed spoke to, which is an excellent point, and you don't have to drive too far around to see the negative impacts of not doing that. So DURAC learned its lesson, and we are huge advocates of public-private partnerships, of course, and I think an expansion of that is required to build up the affordable housing quotient, or excuse me, inventory in Redmond that will allow affordable rents to find a level that help everyone in town.
Thank you. Okay, Clifford, you are up.
Well, I think affordable housing is very important, and I would like to see more of it happening. I know that the city, the county, and the state joint efforts in their constructing Skyline Village, which Mr. Zika was involved in as well, and I think that's a good project from what I read about it, you know. It puts together a large housing development with sizable affordable segments in it, and I think we should concentrate on more housing like that. The other thing that we should look at as well is that the median rental range is $13.06 an hour, which means people only making like $13 an hour, and most of the housing that's being built now is designed for the upper to middle class, and these individuals can't afford to live here. So I heard someone And these individuals can't afford to live here. So I heard someone say, let's keep Redmond Redmond. But I'm saying, if you make the rent so high that the people that live here can't rent here and live here, then you're moving people in from elsewhere. And I don't want to push the people that live in Redmond out of Redmond. You could kind of see what happened. I use Portland for an example, like the Pearl District in downtown Portland. I mean, they just pushed everybody out of there, out of the, you know, northeast area. And basically, it's like you got to be wealthy to live in those areas now. So I think it's very important that we take care of our citizens here in Redmond. We make affordable housing. We do it very smartly. We do it in partnership with the city, the county, and the state. And we work together and keep the focus. I think we'll have a good project going on here and create actual affordable housing.
Thank you. Over the past few months, we've all seen the unrest that's happening in Portland, particularly with the Black Lives Matter movement. And so as you look at this issue, if you were in city council, what would you recommend Redmond do to ensure fair and equitable treatment of minorities by the Redmond Police Department? And once again, we will start with Ron.
All right, thank you. So defunding the police is not the answer for for Redmond. We, I think Redmond is a really, really diverse community, as well as their policing. I've never had a problem with them. As a person of color, I do. I've never had a problem with them. But it's on a national level. There's nothing much that our city can do as far as funding, like a committee or anything else like that. But we do, all we can do right now is educate and talk about the matters that faces the most. So that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you for your answer.
Thank you.
Okay, Michael, you are up.
Yes, as far as the Redmond Police Department goes, there's been no actually proof that there's any systemic racism in Redmond. And the fact that this issue keeps being brought up is a real problem for me. Just saying that something exists that has no proof behind it doesn't really get us anywhere. My opinion is that Redmond is a city of of livability. And to maintain that livability, public safety is the number one issue. And in order to ensure public safety, we need to fund the police department so that they can do their jobs with respect and integrity and treat every human being within the city limits the same. The, some of the ideas I had was we had more training for mental health needs for the people within the city limits so that then when they respond to a call, they can handle it more on an intellectual level rather than through a adversarial level. I think that would benefit the city residents more often than not. The fact that the city police are being, let's say, blackballed, which is an unfair term, I think, is not fair to the Redmond Police Department. They do a very good job. They put their lives on the line every day for every citizen within the city limits. And to put any limits on the police department from doing their job should, I think, is intolerable and unexcusable. The only way I think if there is any systemic problems that the education for the training and enforcement policy should be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you for your answer. Shannon, you're next.
As I stated in my opening statement, I 100% support law enforcement and first responders. We've instilled our confidence in them as a community. They're they have families. They're people too. They elected to do that job. They've chosen to serve. And I feel that it's the the public's duty to support them. Do I believe that there will be situations where, as with any career, there could be a bad apple, of course, but that's up to the system for due diligence and due process to vet that out. I, as I stated as well, I believe completely in diversity and equity, but with a purpose. I do not support violence to promote those values. I do not support violence to have your voice heard. And I feel like the police and any first responders who put their lives on the line day in and day out deserve to be supported and not scrutinized. I do feel that defunding the police is completely inappropriate. Without them, we have no way to ensure justice and enforcement. And as I said, they're people too. So they deserve the same rights that we do. They deserve the support because without them protecting our community, we would be at a loss. So I, like I said, I am 100% a supporter of law enforcement and a supporter of the city of Redmond, supporting RPD because they're doing their jobs and protecting us as individuals and our families.
Thank you. Ed, you are next, sir.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
The, I agree with everybody that defunding the police is just doesn't even make any sense. In fact, from my perspective, the police may even need more resources in dealing with situations, including coordination with mental health services and things of that nature. Having said that, I don't think the city should be afraid to at least address the issue. I'm not aware of any, any problem within the city government or the police department regarding equal treatment. But in terms of transparency and openness, I wouldn't even, I would not mind having an audit of the city done by themselves with a citizen involvement to ensure that we're doing best practices at every level. I don't know that, and I doubt anyone else running for the office knows that in every detail for every department at this juncture. But the issue has been raised across the board throughout the country. I think it's incumbent on us to make sure with a transparency to our community that Redmond has the best practices for equal treatment to everyone under the law. And I would not be afraid to examine that. And I don't think anyone in the city would be afraid to examine that because I'm confident that will show that the city is exercising best practices. But we want to relate that to the community at large.
Thank you for your answer. Don, you're up.
Thanks. I was a huge supporter of the effort by the Redmond Police Department a couple of years ago to create a financing structure for them to add more officers to their roles. I was incredibly disappointed that that effort did not find traction, but I continue to support it. I do believe that we need more officers, more feet on the street, as they say. I also think that protest is a protected right. Rioting and vandalism is not. And not only do those, the activists need to make sure that they are protesting within the law, but the media and others need to make sure that they are separating those entities when they discuss what's going on in the cities. I think that's a big part of what went wrong in Portland. And we don't have those problems here today. The BLM protests that I've been to have been peaceful. And I want the BLM folks to continue to be active. And I want the city to continue to listen.
Thank you for your answer. Clifford, you are up.
Thank you. The Constitution allows for peaceful protest, and I agree with that. What I would do want to say is that I was a commander for the Sheriff's Department for 20 years. And what is happening is that word usage is very important. People keep saying, defund the police. First of all, police agencies, sheriff's departments, we have the biggest budgets in most cities. That's the first thing. Defunding is a bad word. That's not the word. The word is reallocating funds. And what you want to do when they say people say defund, it's supposed to be reallocate. With the amount of money that we get in police departments and sheriff's departments, we can reallocate the funds to get mental health advisors involved in situations. Every situation doesn't require a police officer with a gun to be at the scene. That's what I'm saying. The other thing is this, you need to be proactive rather than reactive. Just because something isn't happening in Redmond at the time doesn't mean in the future, things will change. The other thing is this, there's not a lot of diversity in Redmond, if you haven't noticed. So it's really obvious that not a lot goes on here. It's a little town. People in this town have been living in a bubble for a very long time. But you know what? There's an outside world, and there's distractions all the time. Also, there's bad police officers, there's good police officers, there's bad people, there's good people. As a commander, and we interviewed a lot of people, we can't screen them out. We're not psychologists. We can't figure out what they think, what they're thinking. But what has to happen is bad police officers have to be held accountable. They have to be held accountable, not just fired or disciplined. If they do something really bad, you have to decertify them, which means they can't leave here and go to another police department and get a job. So what I'm saying is that I support my my fellows in blue and green, which is the police and the sheriff's department, okay? But I also support civil rights, and that's what we're talking about here. So I say, be proactive, not reactive, and look at the problem and see if there is a problem, but don't ignore it. So that's my take on it.
Thank you for your answer. So we're gearing up. We may have time for two more questions or just one more, but we had all mentioned earlier with the COVID-19 question and then also the housing question. But here I'd like to get more specific on this. How specifically should the city get behind economic development and bring job opportunities to Redmond? And once again, we will start with Ron.
Thank you. So we need to focus our, focus our to outside businesses to bring into Redmond. Those are the ones that keep our city alive. That's what brings us the money that we need to build our infrastructure, to build our housing, to pretty much give us what we need to get a foot down. So as city councilor, I'd proactively go out and start looking for those businesses and start talking to those businesses to bring in into Redmond so that that way that we can open up the communication to getting them here, get a foot in the door, and actually have them settle down and start growing. That's what Redmond's vision is, and that's how we're going to do it going along, going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, you're up.
What I would do is I would definitely ensure that we keep the partnership going with Ready and John Stark and his group. John Stark and his group have brought in hundreds of millions of dollars worth of business investment into Redmond. They've actually made an economic impact to the point where the salaries of the citizens of Redmond have gone up substantially over the last five years. I think that most of the median income of the people that work in the businesses here and that John Stark has brought in is closer to 40 to $44,000 a year, which is over the median income at this point. And I would also continue the partnership with Edco, which also works on bringing economic opportunities to Redmond. The planning commission has done an economic needs analysis, which has allocated lands for such development to bring in bigger businesses through larger tracts of land. And hopefully, with those businesses coming in will become living wage jobs, will help improve the livability of the city citizens for the city of Redmond. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon, you're up.
I do agree. It's the city's opportunity to pursue and evaluate introduction of businesses into the community that can provide a positive impact and jobs and those salary increases we've all discussed. I do believe that as well with any kind of introduction of new businesses that are providing additional jobs and promoting growth that we have to look at the infrastructure impacts associated with that growth. So looking into partnerships with those those larger businesses, those larger companies that have the capital available to make sure that we're we're accommodating that growth and that we're looking at the infrastructure impacts and looking at the full brevity of the situation. So that not only is it a positive impact on the growth side and the impact to affordable housing and promoting the current citizens, but also making sure that we're not seeing impacts on the reactive side like we've seen with the large expanse and or the large growth we've seen in population. But now we're having to be reactive to try to catch up. We don't want to be in that continuous cycle of trying to catch up. I do believe it's important, though, to fully vet out and and take all business opportunities into consideration because that's that allows Redmond to grow and that promotes the well-being of the current citizens and any future citizens that move to the city.
Thank you for your answer. Ed, you are up.
Following the last recession, I chaired the Redmond Economic Development Commission. And our task was to come up with a plan to facilitate the economic development here in Redmond. What we found is is that in interviewing a lot of businesses, talking with John Stark at Ready, it really takes a village on economic development because a lot of businesses are looking at a community that has, one, a vibrant downtown, a good school system, a city government that is open for business and is going to help business locate and cut through red tape if necessary. I think as a community, we are all striving in that direction. I would say this, since I came here in 1979, the city has gone above and beyond trying to facilitate economic development. There's a lot more we can do in the future. Part of that is developing the old Juniper Golf Course. Part of it is getting COCC to expand and facilitate business development here in our community. There's always more work to do, but I would say Redmond is an A+ in terms of facilitating business development in our community.
Thank you for your answer. Don, you are up.
Thank you. First of all, I support the proposed new urban renewal district at the south end of Redmond. I think that would be a great way for a comprehensive approach to redeveloping that end of town. As you might imagine, on DURAC, we had some experience with some of these projects. And some of them were successful, others were not. But examining public private partnerships is the best way to for our taxpayers to get the most bang for their buck. And I would continue that that development. And I just, you know, the expansion of downtown in the last few years has been a real success story. I mean, I've heard from people folks I know all over that have driven through for the first time in years and just been knocked out. So I want to keep that momentum going in downtown, and I'd like to get things cranking in the medical business district. There's a lot we can do there. But we have to have a willing partner. So far, St. Charles has not been that partner, but I live in hope. Thank you.
Thank you for your answer. Clifford, you are up.
Yes, thank you. I believe that economic development in downtown is very important. Just before the virus hit, I was in downtown most of the time because I'm a city boy and I like city. And everything was starting to grow and look very, very good. And then the virus came and it hit, and it hit pretty hard. And what I also noticed was that everyone goes to Ben to spend our money in Redmond, our Redmond money, which is kind of bothersome, you know. So everything's in Ben. I know every time I talk to somebody, I say, well, what can I do this year? Oh, you got to go to Ben to do that, you know. So I would love to see Redmond become a city in itself, not a bedroom to Ben, but a city in itself. So any kind of economic development that we could get here, stores and things like that where people could shop, you know, close proximity. And our senior citizens, they're going to need some way to get to these stores. And most of them now got to try to drive 20 miles one way just to go to Ben to shop. And as you get older, that's not what you want to be doing. So I think that if we all work together, and I mean, we got some very sharp people on this panel, as I can see. And hopefully, the city council, John Starks, and the rest of the crew, we can all get together and get something going in town here. And I'm excited about it. Even with the virus still lingering, I think that we're going to be on a path to success and make Redmond a place that people want to live in. And with the airport here, we should be the hub. So I'm not quite sure why our money's going to Ben. So let's kind of keep it here. So shop local. That's what I got to say. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for your answer. And thank you all for answering the questions that we were presenting to you. You guys have covered a wide range of topics, and obviously, there are more that could be covered. And so now we're going to move into our closing remarks. And so we're going to go in the opposite order. So Clifford, you're going to be next. But any last words that you want to say as we're wrapping up this session? Clifford, you're up.
Well, first of all, I want to thank everyone that was on the panel along with me. And I'm sure one of us is going to get the position, or few of us will get the positions. And I And I hope that what we're saying here on camera in front of the people is what we mean from within. It's not just a candidate talking. I want it to be true and you know, your word is bond. Uh, Redmond is a great city. We got great people here. You know, I want to see everybody thrive, you know? But most of all, we want to keep something intact. And that's your uh, character, your integrity and your transparency, more than anything. So we got to work together as a team. Not, one of us on this panel can make these decisions by ourselves. So we got to work together as a team. So what I say to you in closing is that um, I have the most respect for all my uh, competitors. And I hope that I get the, the vote, whatever, you know? But I really uh, am here to serve the people. And I believe that Redmond is a great city and I think we'll do well. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, Don, you are next.
Thanks. I also, I want to thank the uh, League of Women Voters, the City Club and Connect for making this happen. Want to thank the uh, others on the panel for intelligent, concise and informative answers. Redmond is in a pretty good place right now considering what we've been going through in 2020. I think that is a function of our unity as a city. The pandemic has brought Redmond citizens together in a way that I've never seen in my life. And uh, it's, it's very affecting to me. I want us to consider that or continue that, excuse me. And I want to make sure that we are all working together to continue to keep Redmond one of the most livable cities in America. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ed, you are up.
Thank you. Um, I've been part of the Redmond community since 1979. I met my wife Susan here. We raised our children Andrew and Alex here. So I've been here over 40 years. Uh, I served as city attorney for 17 years. I was elected mayor twice. And following the last recession, I did chair the Redmond Economic Development Commission. When I was mayor, we were able to get the funding for the reroute of Highway 97 around downtown so it could become a focal point for the community. We also got the funding for the Highland Glacier Cuplet and we protected the Dry Canyon from development. I think there's a, a lot of opportunities we have as a community to revitalize the area around the airport in terms of the old Juniper Golf Course. I think there's an opportunity here to um, get land available for COCC to expand in the future. I also served for 10 years on the South Highway Redding uh, Committee. And we came up with a plan that is currently going to the council for consideration. Uh, I do think that South Highway 97 is going to be revitalized through that effort. But I also think we need a long-term solution for Highway 97 so that it goes east of the railroad tracks downstream instead of giving 97 bypass Redmond. The reason I'm running really is to make sure that we have an open and transparent council, that we involve the entire community in our, in our, reaching our solutions to address challenges before our community. I think the council has become fairly narrow in the last few years. It's been divisive and I think that needs to change. With the experience that I, I've had over the years here in Redmond, the knowledge of hoping to get things done, uh, I do think we can change things and move Redmond in a more positive direction going forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your answer. Shannon, you're up.
First off, I'd like to thank the organizations involved for giving us this opportunity and forum to voice our concerns, voice our platforms, voice our opinions. Um, I'm very thankful to be amongst a very worthy group of candidates. I think those elected will serve the community very well. Um, as a candidate and potential councillor, I promise to promote growth while still maintaining our core community, doing what's in the best interest of the community. I promise to bring fresh ideas and perspectives. As an engineer, I can lend my technical expertise to really promote proactive infrastructure involvement evaluation, making sure we're taking those things into, into consideration as we look towards growth, as we look towards promoting the city of Redmond. Um, I always promise to be honest, transparent and reliable and approachable. That's one of the, the biggest things for me that's true to my heart is I believe in being a person, being a, a person for the people, being a voice for the people and really hearing those values, hearing what they have to say, but turning it into something that's, that's positive and really finding a, a solution to the problems, but in an effective manner. Can we solve all the problems in one fell swoop? Absolutely not, but we can focus on those critical problems and really make sure we're taking those to heart and being representatives in the most effective manner for the citizens of Redmond. Uh, I look very forward to potentially being a public servant again and representing the citizens and, and doing what, what we think is best and, and providing the, the best support we can for the collective community. So I appreciate the opportunity and I look forward to, to serving the city of Redmond.
Thank you for your answer. Michael, you're up.
Yes, um, I want to thank the League of Women Voters, the City Club and Connect for hosting this forum. I think it produced a very valuable uh, answers to all the questions from all the candidates. I think everybody was very response, responsive and responsible with their answers. Uh, in my case, I would, I'm ensuring that uh, by being elected to the city council that we keep uh, Redmond business friendly. We support affordable housing. We work on public safety issues for the benefit of all the residents of the city of Redmond. We work on the uh, infrastructure maintenance and expansion to provide the business-friendly environment for the city of Redmond. We've also should maintain um, Cascades Transit and improve public transportation within the city limits of Redmond. I think that's a goal that will help long-term. Uh, the Airport Master Plan, the Transportation System Plan, the West Redmond Area Project, the House, South Highway 97 Plan, I've all been involved with being on the Planning Commission. And I think the uh, time I've spent on that commission has given me an insight to the direction that the city of Redmond needs to go within the next four years. And I would be pleased and honored to be your next city council at, after the November 3rd election. Thank you.
Thank you for your answer. Ronald, you are up.
All right. I'd like to thank the uh, the League, City Club and Connect Oregon for uh, inviting us out to this forum today. Uh, I, I do believe we have a very qualified set of candidates here um, that are running for city council and uh, I'm asking for your vote in November as your city councillor. Uh, I like to focus on uh, on transportation, uh, or infrastructure, businesses coming into Redmond and affordable housing and also uh, the American worker. It's Frank T. Redmond's uh, uh, legacy. Uh, when he first uh, found Redmond that uh, you know, all walks of life are to, to come here and build a city and it started with the Oregon Truck Railroad. Everybody started coming in bustling town and started to develop faster than he could, he could see. Um, you know, I've been in central Oregon for a really, really long time and uh, you know, families matter the most to me and uh, how, how families are being grown here. We need to get those jobs in here and uh, start attracting jobs. Uh, I'd like to see the development of South 97 Highway. Uh, that's been uh, in, in, in the process for several years, actually move forward. So as city councillor, I have an open door policy. See me at Walmart or whatever, please feel free to talk to me. I'm an open person and I like talking about things that uh, Redmond, uh, Redmond citizens need. So I look forward to, to working with you guys uh, after November and I ask for your vote. And uh, let's just move Redmond forward together. Thanks.
Thank you for your answer. And thank you all of the Redmond City Council candidates for participating in today's forum. And thanks to the League of Women Voters for partnering with City Club to uh, get this information out. Remember, if you enjoyed today's forum and would like to help cover the costs, please consider making a donation to City Club on their website at citicclubco.org. If you're interested in becoming a member or making a contribution to the League of Women Voters, please contact the League through their website at www.lwdschutz.org. Thanks to our candidate forum series sponsors, the Deschutes Public Library and Buchanan Schmidt LLC. The next candidate forum will be the Secretary of State and will air on Tuesday, September 29th at 7:00 PM. Please